We are going to start our council meeting.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 4th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. Members Flores, Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Councilmember Nelson is absent.
Please stand for a moment of silence and then following the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to accept the minutes from the August 21st City Council meeting and bills for payment September 6th and 13th, Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores.
Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? I'm hearing and seeing none. I will ask that the public stands on... I would like to remind everyone that we will stop the meeting at approximately 9:30 for a public hearing. I would ask the media to please line up on the left side of the aisle facing the stage, and citizens to line up on the right aisle to avoid confusion. I would like to ask the public to clearly state your name and municipality for the record. You will have five minutes, and you can come up now if you would like to speak, citizens to be heard. Do you want to come up to the podium and speak, ma'am?
Yes.
Please just state your name and the municipality in which you live.
Okay. Barbara Matlock. I live in the city of Erie, 4103 Dexter Avenue. Okay, can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I have concerns about Perseus House building a mental health care facility up by me. They changed the rules for the zoning at the last board meeting, didn't even tell us that they changed what they were going to even vote on, but it isn't a group home. They changed the meaning to a group home. If they would have looked up with the meaning of a group home, it's a residential facility in a residential neighborhood with six or less youths in there. And it's the stage one of trying to get the kids back their mental health. They have... They declare themselves a mental health facility for youth. And the other thing is they mentioned something about a comma. The comma, if you look very closely, and we had two or three of the council members look at it, and they said that it was interpreted wrong. And third, under 305.5, a rehabilitative facility cannot be within 500 feet of a chapel, a church, a school, a park, a playground, or where minors would congregate. And right behind the acreage where they're going to put it is Elevate, which is a trampoline park, which is off... There's kids particularly on weekends and stuff, and it's for the safety of minors. We have not seen any building plans. We haven't seen any security. The building plans that they had were just temporary, according to the Realtor I talked to, that they have to do that. We also had a drainage problem once they dug all that up up there, and most of us had to put in a drainage... A new drainage system in our cellars, and we had to put in ditches and everything else. They're taking out the two places where the water was staying to prevent it from coming down the hill. We have worries about that. We also have worries about the security, because these are going to be all city kids, and it's going to be a tight fit in there. They want to put in... They're going to host 45 children. That's what they're telling us. Maybe it'll be more after a while, but eight to 10 buildings. It's a very thin lot. It's long, but it's thin. We have elderly residents to the east, and the property is a budding backyard of people who have grandkids or kids, and we don't know how they're going to keep them apart or be able to secure the property in any way. They are a nonprofit, so they will not be paying taxes. We will be ending up paying the taxes for security and the loss of a regular land tax up there. So... And we'll have more city police up there, and they have to okay it. Fire department has to okay it. I just don't see how it fits, and that they don't need a variance, that they don't need anything, and we got... Everybody I talked to that has gone to meetings, we have a little bit of doubt about the impartiality of Attorney Martinucci. He seems to be not doing his... What his responsibility is. He's basically pro Perseus House. Is that...
That's the end of your five minutes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard this morning? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard this morning? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard this morning? I see and hear none. We will move on, Lori.
Council file number 16456, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $319,580 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for the stream bank restoration within garrison run through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. COVID-19 ARPA H2OPA grant number C000087891, sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon. The council file ordinance bill number 16456, and now known as official file ordinance 442024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 442024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16457, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for the stream bank within cemetery run through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Watershed Restoration and Protection Program, grant number C000083562, sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon. The council file ordinance bill number 16147, and now known as official file ordinance 452024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 452024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16458, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for the stream bank restoration with garrison run through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Watershed Restoration and Protection Program, grant number C000083561, sponsored by Councilmember Troop, seconded by Councilmember Witherspoon. That council file ordinance bill number 16458, and now known as official file ordinance 462024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 462024 by yea six, nay zero. Council file number 16459, an ordinance amending Part 1 Title V bureaus by creating Article 131 Bureau of Fire Emergency Services Cost Recovery to authorize and establish a process and procedure for the recovery of the costs for certain emergency services. Sponsored by Councilmember Witherspoon, seconded by Councilmember Brzezinski. The council file ordinance bill number 16459, and now known as official file ordinance 472024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 472024, finally by yea six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16460, an ordinance amending Article 704 alcoholic beverages and more specifically amending Section 70401 and adding Section 70402, consumption in public or private property; 70403, consumption in motor vehicle; 70404, open containers on public or private property; 70405, discarding containers; and 70406, exemptions. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the council file ordinance number 16460, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski?
No.
Nelson's absent. Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16460 by yea five, nay one on first reading. Council file number 16461, an ordinance amending Article 119, Section 11905, compensation of city treasure, taking the compensation from... Set by ordinance from $48,000 to $75,000 annually effective the first Monday of January 2028. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the council file ordinance number 16461, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16461 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 14... 16462, amending Article 121, Section 12110, compensation of city controller. This will go from $38,000 to $75,000 annually effective the first Monday of January 2026. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the council file ordinance number 16462, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16462 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16463, an ordinance amending Article 113, Section 11308, compensation of the mayor. Compensation will go from $95,000 to $120,000 annually to be effective commencing the first Monday of January 2026. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the council file ordinance number 16463, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw?
No.
Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16463 by yea five, nay one on first reading. Council file number 16464, an ordinance amending official ordinance number 80, 2005, known as the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie by amending Articles 2, 3, and 6 of the city of Erie zoning ordinance to promote flexibility in accommodating various land uses in the city's zoning districts, reduce administrative barriers, and enhance developmental... Develop potential and investment throughout the city of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the council file ordinance number 16464, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmembers Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16464 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16465, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $12,500 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, the contribution from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission from the FFY 2022 Certified Local Government Grant. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the council file ordinance number 16465, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16465 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16466, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. The contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission from the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant number 2023 PRO2252. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the council file ordinance bill number 16466, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16466 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16467, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. The contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission from the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant number 2022 PR2458. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the council file ordinance number 16467, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16467 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16468, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $517,746.34 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the sewer fund balance. The funds were received from the revenue replacement in 2022 to pay for the incinerator repair upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant and only partially expended in 2023. The project is ongoing and needs to be re-appropriated for 2024. Sponsored by Councilmember Shaw, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the council file ordinance number 16468, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16468 by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Okay. We aren't going to start the public hearing until 9:30, so you can go into new business.
Do we have a motion and a second to move the balance of the agenda?
Move the bills?
Second.
Thank you. Any separation?
Any separation? Voting on the resolution moving the balance of the agenda, Members Brzezinski, Shaw, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon, and Flores. Resolution passes, yea six, nay zero. Okay, it's still 9:25. Do you want to start with committee reports?
I don't believe we're going to get done with committee reports, so I don't even want to start, just because some of us are long-winded. So do we just wait till 9:30 to start the public hearing?
Madam President, may I make a comment? It's not a committee report.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to congratulate Journey to a Trauma Form Life. We've got two of the representatives here, and so they are the... We just... The motion or the resolution that we just passed was to help their business, and the work that they're doing there is extraordinary, to say the least, in helping some of the most marginalized and historically oppressed in our city. And so I just wanted to thank both of them for coming, Dr. Kohler and Angelica Sprigens.
Awesome, yeah. I did see that they were receiving funds. It's just because we moved the balance. We didn't really separate it to have a moment of discussion, but I'm very happy for you guys, and we appreciate the work that you do in our community. Were there any other comments? No? We're just gonna wait till we start the public hearing before we start our committee reports.
Sir, if you're planning to testify for the public hearing, you guys need to stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in by the stenographer.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not give the proof? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Toman. I work at the Knox Law Firm, 120 West 10th Street, Erie, PA 16501. I'm here on behalf of Taco Bistro LLC, who is the applicant for purposes of this public hearing. Specifically, the public hearing is for the transfer or intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from the borough of Albion to the city of Erie. In particular, we're looking to relocate this license to 2056 West 8th Street, Erie, PA 16505, which is at the corner of 8th Street and Beverly. It's a former location of the Lager Cafe, which had previously held a liquor license. Based on that, we don't think that this transfer in the liquor license is going to have any adverse impact on the health, safety, morals of the community. It's located in a traditionally commercial corridor of the city, and as I previously mentioned, this location specifically had another liquor license. The owners are established proprietors of other businesses in the city of Erie, specifically restaurants. I have with me Ryan Adzer. He is the owner also of Federal Hill Smokehouse, and then he also operates a food truck, Taco Bistro, the food truck. So the whole concept you may be already familiar with, it's basically taking it from the food truck to an established location. And if you guys have any questions about operations or anything along those lines, then I'd like to speak to those, but if you have any questions for me at this time, I'm welcome to entertain them.
If it's all right, I would like Ryan to tell us a little bit about it. I love Federal Hill. I'm not too familiar with the Taco Bistro place.
Sorry, it's Taco Distro with a D.
Okay.
Hello. So what would you like to know?
Just tell me a little bit about... I've really never heard of it before, so I just want some, like...
Like the background?
Yeah, how long has your food truck been around?
Three years. We're primarily located at the peninsula next to Beach Zero, so right at the bottom of the hill. We go around and do a lot of events. You know, we operate, obviously, just in the warmer weather months. You know, the whole goal always was to open brick and mortar, but it's kind of hard to find something you want, so instead of just going someplace, we opened a food truck with this being the final goal of having like a brick and mortar with a bar. So we finally... We purchased... I purchased a Lager, or the former Lager Cafe, last October, so just been waiting to do more stuff, find a liquor license and move forward.
What will your hours of operation be?
I'm assuming if we were open a full day, it would probably be 11 to 11. If we were just operating on, like during the week, maybe four to nine, four to 10. Just all depends. We're not really looking. It could be like, you know, like a night spot bar. It's more of a restaurant that has a bar inside of it, you know? It's not going to be like at 2:00 in the morning, you know, hang out.
Always looking for a good place to dance. Will you have dancing?
I doubt it.
Bummer.
Yeah, sorry.
So currently with the food truck, how many employees with yourself would you say you have?
I think we have about six or seven. We have three full-time, and then we have a good amount of just a couple hour a week people.
And with the expansion to an actual brick and mortar, it would assume that you have enough of a following with your food that we're hoping for success and to expand your business, so this is great news if you're able to grow from a food truck. I know a lot of current people are trying out the food truck aspect, seeing if they can build the following before they get into a business, because sometimes our winters can be a little bit harsh on restaurant businesses, so I'm happy to see that you're able to grow and hopefully, you know, continue to provide employment to our city residents. Any other council members have comments?
Sample's a little helped. It's early.
We're gonna have to make sure you set up for one of our Celebrate Erie events or something in the future. We have a lot of summer things that we have food trucks come and participate in, so maybe that's something that we could reach back out next year, see where everything is.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
It's exciting. Thank you so much.
Oh, thanks.
We go out to eat a lot, too, so tacos and...
Disco.
Beer.
Yeah.
Yeah, tacos and tequila, so it should be good. Is that everything for me?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, now, could you spell your name for me?
Last name or full? You're welcome. Do you have anything further for us?
Nope, I believe that's all for the questions.
And then I understand that you're not voting today, is that correct? It's going to be, is what, September 18th? Is that what I heard? Okay. And then do we need to stick around for after? And then do we need to be present the 18th? And then I think you guys have copies of the proposed ordinance as well, so.
Yep, we'll vote on it on the 18th. I don't believe you have to be present. It'll just go on our agenda. We'll vote on it, and then it'll happen.
Nobody spoke in a negative, so that's a good point.
Yeah. Pretty much it's a done deal. Now we're just waiting for the rest of the, you know, process to finish.
Right, understood. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Good luck with everything. All righty, and now we can get to committee reports. Councilmember Brzezinski, would you like to go first?
Sure, what the heck. First of all, the good news, Andy Zirman is on his way home with new lungs. One of the great guys. He's coming back to work tomorrow, no name. Anyway, welcome home, Andy. Couple of ports, one the Port Authority again. Two big things, of course, the biggest is the coal plant, and our hands are tied a little bit until the DEP can finish all the testing they need to do before they can release the property to us as the Port Authority and move forward there. We're hoping for something by the end of the year, and keep our fingers crossed, that probably will happen. end of the year, and keep our fingers crossed, that probably will happen. And then there is the saga of the alligator. Everybody's looking for a five-foot alligator. You know what? I think I might call Pomerozki and Vogel. Those are the guys that live down on that side there and find out who owns the alligator. Anyway, all kidding aside, we have to take these, as crazy as they sound, we have to take them seriously. And we had the police department, fire department, even the game commission, looking for a five-foot alligator in Lake Erie. Thank goodness, nobody found them, so that's, we'll keep you posted on the alligator trail. The other point that I have is the Erie Events Center. A few things going on there. You know, probably, I want to give Gus Fine a dad a boy for carrying on well, but Casey Wells did one fantastic job with the Events Center for a lot of years, and carrying on in his steed, basically. We were fortunate, we put the netting, major leagues, let's go back a little bit, the major leagues came out with a memorandum, or an order, actually, saying that minor league ball clubs must have netting to protect the people watching the game. And they gave us until next year to get it done. We're fortunate enough to have the Jerry Oat Trust. I'm sure people remember Jerry Oat, he's a good friend and one heck of a guy. Anyway, we tapped that fund, and we were able to put that netting up a year ahead of time. So the fans are safe already, and, you know, we get a lot more fans now that we're on top of the hill, instead of looking up. Hopefully, we'll stay there this year. At the Erie Insurance Arena, they've put protective netting on the east area for the otters, and they, I don't understand it completely, I probably should ask more questions, but they did improve the, it's called the ice plant controls. I guess it monitors the temperatures so that the ice is really professional quality, you know, for our otters when they start. And the last thing, one of my dreams, hopefully before I'm dead, we'll be able to see, is an active bayfront. I mean, it's starting, it's beautiful now, from Beer Garden going over to all the places. But we are adding retail space in that parking area there. Right now, Mr. Melody has Pier Six and the Oyster Bar, and we're gonna be opening up an area, I think Ms. Hertz is the lady that ran the massage at the Renaissance Center. With the fixing up that's going on there, she has, she lost her lease, so we are setting it up, and I think by February, we'll have her down there. A quality, a quality lady and a quality product. Ties right into what we're doing. Hopefully, we can get more restaurants and things like that, so that we can have more conventions coming in, more people coming in. I'd like to see those Viking ships come in here. We've been on a few of them over, across the pond, so to speak, but they're not that big of ships, you know, two, three hundred people, but boy, we could show them Erie, not just on the bayfront, take them to the peninsula, hopefully take them to the zoo, it's still there, and go forward. Exciting things happening, and watch out for alligators. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. I attended the Infinite Erie Legislative Breakfast with Chuck Nelson, and they commented on, kudos to Renee Lemus and Mayor Joe's team because of a very long process of getting different community groups, for a couple of years now, meeting consistently, so that we have supportive housing coming up, and we have a study session on Thursday about it. So those people wanting to know more information, tune into our study session on Thursday. I attended the Vnet Summit at the Bayfront Convention Center, and I learned more about artificial intelligence and cybersecurity, and I thank them for the invitation. It's always great learning more about important issues like that. While I was there, I was outside and met a person from Tulsa, Oklahoma, who was here taping a fishing tournament that had been in Erie over the weekend. It was a long weekend, and there were lots of boats out, and it's just so interesting to know that, you know, he came all the way from Oklahoma. It was a great experience, that he was happy to be here, and there was great fishing to be had in Erie. So there's things that happen that, you know, we don't always know about, but our water is definitely such a draw. Zabawa was wonderful, the Labor Day Parade was wonderful, and the German Festival was wonderful, and the Sea Wolves are wonderful. It's just so great to live in Erie when we have nice weather in the summertime, because community, getting together, sharing, having so much in common, and just feeling the love of all the different festivals and things going around. I do want to mention, if people want to give of themselves, like, in a memory of someone, think of, like, trees, maybe, instead of naming a street, or I was thinking of a bench. I'm sure the Public Works Department and our Sustainability Group would love to talk about maybe trees and benches in honor of a loved one. And I would like to thank anyone who wants to support public restroom facilities, comfort stations in Erie, Pennsylvania, and thinking of a need for brighter lighting in our underpasses, because it's going to be dark sooner, and a lot of people walk under them. I mean, there is lighting there now, but it would be great to have it safer and definitely brighter. I attended the Housing Authority meeting, and just am very thankful for all the organizations out there that are helping our community, and there are so many of them. I can't even begin to thank all of them. But you are appreciated for your commitment, your service, and so many volunteers, so many are not paid, but they just want to give of themselves. So thank you to everyone who participates in making Erie a better place to live, work, and play.
Madam President, I forgot one thing, of course.
Go ahead.
We gotta give a little shout-out to Sarah Pillman, the grant that she wrote for the recycling containers. A great program, I, I don't even call one, actually. They're lightweight, they're beautiful, they have wheels, you can get them going, and it was so attractive to the people that they had to slow down and figure another way to get them out, because traffic going down Holland probably went down to the bay. That was an exaggeration, of course, but she did it, and she was out there directing traffic and everything else, so hats off to that program, because it's gonna help. Anytime we can recycle, we are saving ourselves money and cleaning up our environment, too. I'm sorry, thank you.
No, I just wanted to comment that they are setting up September seventh, between noon, no, nine and two, at the Public Works Building at two zero zero one Holland Street is where they're asking residents to go this coming weekend to pick up the remaining recycling bins. So that was in my committee report as well, but since you're talking about it, I'd rather just give the information. Next council member, Mo, would you like to go, or Mel, however?
Counsel?
Thank you, Madam President, very short. I also received a call regarding the lighting on the underpass. It is very dark there, and we do have some homeless that's camping there, and folks who are walking are nervous. So if we can kinda concentrate on that, I appreciate it. Our police department, as usual, is doing a fine job. They are preparing for the visits of the Vice President-to-be. The chief is on top of it. I've spoken to him through text messages, et cetera. He, his team is ready. They have spoken with the Secret Service, and I think we'll be ready for it, and I'm excited about it. Thank you, Madam President.
Good to hear. All right, Tyler.
Thank you. So a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Democratic National Convention in Chicago. It was incredibly inspiring, exhausting, but to see history in the making. We engaged with, it was, yeah, there was a lot of us there. There was, I was just one in the sea. A lot of dedicated leaders across the country, but it's also a reminder of how much work really lies ahead for us to ensure equity in our policies and our systems of government. From local to international levels, we have a responsibility to make sure our government lives up to its full potential for all citizens. So I came away knowing that change, we're witnessing change happen, but how much more change we still have to work on. As we look, so this year's election, just a few dates that I want to remind everybody about. Last day to register to vote for the general election is October twenty-first, and if it goes like the summertime did, that will be incredibly fast, so make sure you, you know, you are registered to vote. The last day to request a mail-in ballot is October twenty-ninth, and please, please, please make sure your voter registration information is up to date. You can do this at pavoterservices.pad.gov, and you can do it all online. It's free. Just make sure, so if you have moved, your address is up to date. If you've gotten married, if you had to name change, that everything is correct, and that you know where your polling place is, so that you know where to go on Election Day. I'll be partnering with national and state organizations to bring in some trainings for how to run for office within the next few months. We have local elections next year, so we can get everybody involved there. And local news, I've sent out an email to several, and thanks to those who have already RSVP'd around a morning of action at the Erie Zoo on September twenty-eighth, from nine to twelve. It'll be hands-on. We're gonna go there and help them not only learn about some of the projects they have, but to contribute to some of the projects we're working on. So if you'd like to join, please send me an email to my city council address. There is also the Women's Freedom Rally. So they're doing a fundraiser on the twelfth at the Ten Twenty Collective from six to eight, so if you are able to go to support, please do. And the full rally will be on September twenty-eighth, from one to three. So that is the same day as the morning of action at the zoo, so it could be a full day of civic service and engagement. Finally, I am teaching at, or as an adjunct at Mercyhurst this year, and the reason I bring that up is I have challenged my students to attend three of the city council meetings, and at the third city council meeting, they will be presenting a recommendation or a solution to an issue that they've identified in the community to all of us. And so they'll be here at our next meeting to kind of learn how the process goes, because part of, part of what I want to convey is civic engagement and how they can do it. So you'll see my students here next, at our next meeting, and that is it on my end. Thank you.
Madam President, I wanna echo what Kathy was saying. I happened to run into a few people from my college days during summer, and they were up there with their families. And they told me, one of them told me they had been coming to Erie for, I don't know, the last thirty years, or something like that, and they love Erie, how the summer is and stuff like, all the things we have to do. And another one lives in a bigger, lived in a bigger city growing up, and he liked to come to Erie because it's like peaceful, it's slower-moving than like the fast-paced big cities. So, you know, although we live in Erie, and some people may not enjoy it as much, people from out of town really, really enjoy Erie. So just some things from the downtown partnership that they sent me, that they wanted me to convey. He said, "We just finished up our summer event season. We saw huge success this year with all the events, especially the movies, the yoga, and our new Pay-What-You-Can Farmers Market. Overall, we activated public spaces in Erie with forty-plus individual events this summer, not including our assistance to city, city events like Southern Berry Erie, July third fireworks, eight-one-four concerts. Please thank city council for the support of the events. I know I saw many of you, you mentioned some names, Chuck Nelson, Kathy, Jasmine, Tyler, at multiple events this summer. Your support is noticed and appreciated, appreciated. We're also working with Smith Group to publish the draft for the public space development plan on our website soon. We appreciate the support during those feedback sessions, especially the guidance from Public Works and planning, as well as valuable input from city council on the restroom component to the Perry Square portion of the plan. Looking ahead, we're planning to assist the city with the Fiesta in the park, and we'll utilize again volunteers to clean a huge portion of the bayfront on September twenty-first for the Intercoastal Cleanup Day. We are also, we also have our Fall Fest scheduled for Sunday, October twenty-seventh." So they said, "Thanks for all our support."
That's awesome. Thank you.
Madam President, I just...
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say a quick welcome back to students, teachers, professors, staffs, parents, grandparents, guardians, everybody. The school year is well underway, so just welcome back. Hopefully, it's being gentle on all of us who are having to get up a little bit extra early and change up our routines, but to be mindful that when we are, you know, when we're heading out, that the students are learning the bus routes, the walking routes, and so just pay extra attention in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to, you know, congratulate the city on having a successful summer. We're back on the grind of the school year starting. Fall will be here, and then our winter months, but we're gonna enjoy as much of our fall as possible and hope for a late winter. I just wanted to mention a few things. Celebrate Erie went really well. We had a lot of community reach out and, you know, comment on enjoying these summer events that we do. Everyone likes to be outside, so I'm happy that we continue to grow and do those events. I do want to mention, I think this might be the last event that we are participating in as a city, the Fiesta on the Square. It's going to be next week, September fourteenth, between noon and seven PM. This is our kickoff to Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, which goes from September fifteenth all the way to October fifteenth. As a Latinx, you know, descendant, I am very proud that we are able to show representation for our community and also be able to do something. We have our German Festival, we have our Irish Festival, we have our Italian Festival. So it's always great just to be able to show that we are a melting pot in our city, and we encourage everyone's diversity and inclusion in our communities. I also just wanted to mention that I will be a celebrity bartender at the event at Ten Twenty Collective. I'll be going on between seven PM, and this is to raise money for the Women's Freedom Rally that'll be happening on September twenty-seventh, between one and three, at the Bayfront Convention Center. We do have a study session tomorrow that we will be going over for Erie Supportive Housing First Plan, so that's something that we're going to hear more about. I know that housing is a very big issue in our community, and any advancements we have to work towards the need is going to be supported and also encouraged. I will also be a celebrity bartender again for the Sister St. Joseph Neighborhood Fundraiser on September twenty-seventh. Hold on, I think I did the... Oh, I think I did the dates wrong. Yeah, the Women's Freedom Rally is the 28th, the Sisters St. Joseph is the 27th. Obviously, I'm very busy, so I'm getting things mixed up. Anything that I can do to help encourage my community is something I'm willing to participate in, obviously. So that's why I'm willing to do that, even though I'm not somebody who actually actively participates in people drinking and going out into our community. But to each their own, the City of Erie is going to be distributing the remaining recycling bins, which we did receive, thanks to Ms. Sarah Pillman for the grant she wrote. So grant money is good money, so people writing grants is always encouraged, especially if it's a need that we know we cannot as a city do on our own. So that's going to be going on between 9:00 and 2:00 at the Department of Public Works Building. And again, the address is 2001 Holland Street. The City of Erie residents do need to show proof of residency in order to receive one recycling bin per household. And that is all I have to report. I want everybody to just be very vigilant of the children who will be getting to and from school between 7:30 and 9:00. And then also the afternoon drop-off that can range from 2:30 until 5:00, depending on after-school programs and anything that kids are doing out there. Just let's be very, very vigilant because I see people crossing the street with not even looking into the street. So we need to do better educating our community on the right ways to travel and cross the streets because I see headphones, I see cell phones, but I never see anyone looking before they step in the street. So we got to do better. We have to do better. Yes, go ahead, Ed.
May I, again, I brought up in caucus, but we have a pedestrian crossover on Cherry Street in West Arlington. And I noticed the other day that the school bus stops on West Arlington facing east and lets the kids off at that corner because there is a pedestrian crossing. But we don't have any, other than the yellow sign, we have nothing up there to make drivers aware of it. It's a terrible situation. And I mentioned in caucus, I'm saying it now publicly because maybe you're one of those people that drive down or up Cherry Street and don't realize that that is a pedestrian crossing. Legally, you could be fined for going through it if somebody is standing there wanting to cross. I was worried about, they're little kids, they're not teenagers. They're little tykes that get off the bus and then walk across Cherry Street to come home. So we talked, Ms. Lamas can take care of it, but I was making the general public aware of it, too. I should write better notes like Ms. Schoff does and I wouldn't have to keep remembering things at the end. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Yes, go ahead, Mel.
On a sad note, Chipper's Restaurant is now closed as of Friday, was their last day. Thank you.
They're moving locations, right?
No.
Based off, oh, oh, well, based off of what they posted on the social media was making it seem like it was going to be moved to a separate location.
Yeah, I talked to Bishop Jones last night and they're shutting down.
That's very unfortunate. When I could catch their open hours, the food was really good because I know that they had limited hours, kind of like Pineapple Eddie says.
I had my last pork chop Friday.
Well, do we have a report from the, from the solicitor's office?
Not today.
All righty, Lori, do we have one of the mayor's administration?
I'll go as fast as I can. So the first thing I wanted to alert everyone to is that the Hammett Health Foundation is offering a RAM clinic. It's a remote area medical clinic that'll be this Saturday and Sunday, September 7th and 8th at the ECAT Building. We'll be talking about this tomorrow morning during the mayor's press conference, but it'll be free dental, vision, and medical services for residents. This is a thing that travels the country. They've served many other communities, but this is the first time we're able to do something like this in Erie. So really excited to have our Public Works and Police and Fire work with them to make sure that that event is secure and they're open, it's 24 hours, so the people can go anytime. There'll be more information on that tomorrow. Also, just to reiterate, the Fiesta, the Erie Latino Leadership Association will be posting to their social media site with the details. They did create an event page, but as it's already been mentioned, that will be September 14th from 12:00 to 7:00 PM. They're now finalizing details and will be starting to post bands and food vendors and non-food vendors. And we have a very committed team of volunteers that's been working on that and are looking forward to that next Saturday. Also, as has already been mentioned, Housing First Erie Study Session will be tomorrow night at 5:30. We talked a little bit about grants today. Just wanted to mention that, you know, on this agenda, we appropriated six grants totaling $782,080. And I just want to commend the staff for working on those with us and, you know, part of the battle is writing them and getting the funding and being competitive, but the other part is managing those grants and making sure that we're following all the requirements. It takes a lot of extra work, but the staff is committed to bringing these extra projects and initiatives to city residents. And so they do it, and they do it well. Let's see, also, wanted to mention that the 12th Street Reimagined Draft Plan has been posted to the city's website. If anyone is interested and wants to provide comment, that they can go to the city's website and search 12th Street Project for the project page. We also have posted to our social media that the calendar photo contest is currently on. So any budding photographers or established photographers who want to submit potential photos for the city calendar can go to our social media for the link and submit those photos by October 14th for consideration to the 2025 calendar. And then two more things very quickly. In terms of the recycling bins, I just, I know that, you know, Monday, last Monday's shift went great, the evening Tuesday shift was a little bit chaotic because so many people turned up. So as was already mentioned, we'll be, we'll be handing out the remainder of the bins on Saturday, September 7th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this, this process is going to mirror the tire and electronics recycling event, so we'll have extra staff on to help move the lines faster. And there will also be two lanes of traffic that can get the bins at the same time. So it should go much more smoothly. And then finally, just wanted to, I know we've had some questions about the ARP revenue replacement, which passed without discussion, and I just wanted to make sure people understand. The ARP funding that the city received is all still going to the same purposes that it was originally designed to. The funding is being spent very well, we're ahead of many other cities in where they're at. However, the ARP revenue replacement process just enables us to protect the funding so that we won't be held to upcoming deadlines. And we won't, we won't, we won't have to potentially send any funding back that is unspent. So all the funding's still being spent for the same purposes, it's all been allocated. We're going to proceed as if it's ARP funding, but this just kind of protects our funding to make sure that it can all be spent for what we've intended. So I just wanted to make that clarification. We've had a lot of people reach out and ask for money, ask how we're going to be spending it. We're spending it in the same way that we've all already designated it. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Yeah, I also just wanted to ask that when we're posting about the upcoming Fiesta on the Square, that we also post to the city's social medias because the Ella only has under 1,500 followers on their page and we have 17,000.
Yeah, we will share it when they post it.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, that concludes our city council meeting for the first Monday, I mean, the first Wednesday of September. Thank you.
City Council adjourns at 10:07 AM. Members Flores, Brazinski, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.